I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, July 1, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I'll call roles, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart. We are going to start this evening with a presentation on the state of health care from Evergreen Health with Chris Brittison, Evergreen Health's Chief Operating and Strategy Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. We want to talk, I think we were here about a year ago exactly, to do this presentation, but lots happen in health care and a lot is happening even as we speak with Medicaid funding and different things. But I want to talk about our mission because that's a very important thing for us, and that's to advance the health of our community. And I want to pause there for a second because we do provide health care to people, but we really want to focus on providing health to our community. And so we're looking for ways to partner. So if the city of Redmond has any initiatives related to that of getting the community healthier, we'd love to participate in that. So that's my little side plug there. But we want to do that through high-quality, safe, compassionate, and cost-effective health care. And of course, our values and vision are listed here as well. We are a public hospital, so we're governed by a board of commissioners. And I'm very thrilled tonight to introduce you our chair, Board Chair Virgil Snyder, Commissioner Snyder, and one of our commissioners, Norm Seabrooks, who's here as well, who lives in Redmond. And then our Director of Marketing, Karen Matthews, is here. But you can see we have seven commissioners, and they are all listed here, and they are very engaged and involved, and we're very thankful to be locally governed. Our district boundaries, a reminder, is that if the King County Public Hospital District Number Two is that lower box in the green, and it's with the peach in the background, and so we cover seven cities. And then that big box up above is our Snohomish County District that we manage on behalf of Snohomish County Public Hospital District Number One, and that's in Monroe, and there's a separate hospital there. But tonight, I'm focusing on the Kirkland area and Redmond and Duval and Samamish and Woodenville and all those cities that are in our district. So we serve about a million people on the east side, although there's about 330,000 in our actual district, but there's a million people in the greater service area. And we are a public hospital district-like and have taxing authority similar to a fire station or a school district. And so a portion of property taxes go to support the hospital, and we do not take that for granted. That's a real privilege and honor, and we take that very seriously, and we very much appreciate it. These are some of the things that we do. We're a 354-bed hospital. That's the largest public hospital in the state of Washington. And we deliver the second-most number of babies in the state with little over 4,500. I'm not going to read all these numbers, but we do have two emergency departments. I'll talk about the second one that's outside the main hospital in just a minute, and a number of clinics. And we'll talk more specifically about what we have here in Redmond. So we are Level III Trauma Center and also Level III Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, or NICU. And we have a lot of services in Redmond. Bella Bottega over by QFC, not too far from here. We have that whole building. There's a picture of it there. We've got a separate emergency department there, freestanding, that's under the hospital license. We have urgent care. We have a number of primary care clinics. And then we also, a few years ago, opened a clinic in Redmond Town Center that's doing very well. We're, I think, hiring our fifth physician there. And then we have to figure out, what do we do after that? Because there's still a lot of demand for us in Redmond, and so keeping our eyes open for other opportunities to expand further here. We're a member of the One Redmond, One Redmond, and I am pleased to recently be elected to the board there, so will be joining Mayor Bernie there. I was elected in May. We're a proud sponsor of Redmond Derby Days and the Redmond Saturday Market, and we sponsor a number of things throughout the district between, you can see the list of things there, but we really invest a lot in sponsorships in our community. So we also, with levy money that we get, do set aside a portion of it for programs. So we have what we call levy-funded programs. About $6.2 million in 2024 went to supporting youth mental health. We're in the schools, Lake Washington and North Shore School Districts, where we provide mental health therapists. We have investments in senior programs. We are trying to address social determinants of health, and that's, the best we can do is, we think that the best role we have in that is to plug people into resources that are available. And so we have our chat program, Community Healthcare Access Team, who helps focus on getting people resources that they need, including insurance enrollment and Medicaid or other programs. And then, of course, end-of-life. Sadly, we want to be there for those folks as well through palliative and hospice, our inpatient care center, and these funds help support that as well. So let's talk about some of the awards that we have. We continue to perform well. These are not awards that we seek out. These are based on our results. And so Health Grades is an organization that grades hospitals, and we are in America's 50th. We're in the top 50 for hospitals based on the criteria that they use. And that is, I think, our fourth year with that status. These small boxes in the middle are specific things that state things like top three in the state for cardiology, number one for GI. There's different trophies that they give that are subsets of the award for top 50 hospitals. So you don't have to read all those, but we're really proud of the work that's done there, and this is all based on our clinicians who do great work. So I'm going to go to the next page, which shows Leapfrog, which is something that looks at hospital safety. Unfortunately, sometimes things happen in hospitals that can be avoided, and we work really hard and have been recognized by outside agencies for our safety grade of an A, and we've had 13 semesters in a row of A grades. And you can see of the whole surrounding area, the next hospital that has one is down by C-Tac. So all the other hospitals in the area are getting, you know, other grades, and I think Virginia Mason also is getting an A, so over west of here. So we're really proud of that work. And then when you match all of it up, you take the top 50 hospitals, the Leapfrog A, and CMS, which is the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. That's actually the most difficult and most rigorous. We've had that for nine straight years. We have five-star rating, which is the highest you can get. If you look at the hospitals in the United States, of about 5,000 hospitals, there are only 12 that have all three of those, top 50, A-grade, and five-star CMS. And we are one of them. These are listed alphabetical. We're not one out of 12, but we are really proud to be on that list. So when we talk about the state of health care in the hospital, we have to talk about the economic situation as well. And Washington State has a number of economic challenges for hospitals, but it's getting better. So if you look on the left, you can see, you know, in 2022, hospitals in Washington lost $2.1 billion. Then it went down to $1.7 billion, and then $398 million last year. If we didn't have the SNAP program, the Safety Net Assessment Program that we got last year, it would have been 1.6, and that is in jeopardy in the future, based on what's happening at the federal level. So we're watching that closely. We've had expense increases across the board. I'm not going to read all the categories, but wages in every category, we've had tremendous increases in expenses. These are recent headlines, not to scare people, but this is just from like April and May and June of this year. So health care is facing deep cuts in the state House and Senate. That did happen. We did, it wasn't quite as bad as it could have been, but we had deep cuts. And then issues with Medicaid, hospital closures. These are some local headlines. So just recently, I think June 6, Tacoma Hospitals cutting virtual services and ending 200 jobs. We have Peace Health cutting 1% of its workforce. Providence Everett Plans 25% Cut to Nursing Assistance, et cetera. So, and right down in Renton, there's been a lot of news about Valley Medical Center and some of the cuts and closures that they've had of services. So we are working hard to continue to provide services. We haven't had to cut anything, but it's challenging to make the books balance, but we're working hard to do it. So there's been a lot of consolidation, probably because of the economics. So if we take row one across, that's University of Washington. They affiliated with Valley Medical Center. And then Northwest in 2018, they really haven't had any other affiliation since then. If you go down to the second row, MultiCare, where I used to work in Tacoma before I came to Evergreen, they affiliated, they've affiliated with a number of different hospitals along the way, adding, adding, adding. The most recent one was last year with Overlake. So Overlake is now governed by, owned by a Tacoma organization called MultiCare. And that was, you know, that happened in October of 2024. Providence, we know that there's been a lot of consolidation there. And then CHI Franciscan, Virginia Mason, in 2022 became part of that organization, also Tacoma-based. And then Kaiser is on its own row there. And they are at a national level doing some mergers, and their national regional market mergers are called Brissant Healthcare, and they're merging with some non-traditional Kaiser hospitals to try to diversify a little bit. All right, so 1972, this was us. And the campus there in the upper left, we had 76 beds. We had about 22,000 residents. Remember, before I said we had 300, now we have 330,000. Our levy at that time was 75 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Let's look at what it is today. Now we're at 354 beds. We have all these primary care and specialty practices. We, our district population is up. Our levy has dropped to 14 cents, and that's because, we haven't done any votes on our levy until this year, which I'm not going to really talk about tonight, but we, as property values have gone up and our levy has been capped at 1% per year, we have fallen from 75 cents per thousand down to 14 cents per thousand. And so we're needing to address that in the future. You can see, compared to other hospitals of the 57 public hospital districts in the state, we are at 14 cents down in the very far left-hand corner. So we've got the lowest amount of, we're tied with two other hospitals for the lowest amount on levy dollars per thousand. So this is how it breaks down for Redmond. If you live here, it's about 1.8% of an average property tax statement here in terms of the breakdown, about 40% of what the library gets. And as you can see, the comparisons there with those small slices of the pie. So one of the things I want to mention is that Evergreen Health, one of the things that we've done, we're really trying to remain independent because we think local control is important. And so we've done partnerships, and there was a slide that had a logo for Fred Hutch Cancer Center, which they provide all of our medical oncology. We have Seattle Children's on there, and I want to pause for a minute and talk about that. So today, you're the first ones to hear this. This has been confidential, but today, we closed on a deal with Seattle Children's, and we have a joint venture with them that will have, our pediatric unit will be joint venture with Seattle Children's. So there will be resources available so that kids can stay on the east side and not have to go over. And also our NICU. So it's a joint venture that's closed today. We had our kickoff and ribbon cutting, and there'll be some publicity about it next week, but we're really proud of that. And we talk a lot about the hospital being very full, but the one area that has not been full is our pediatric unit and our NICU. There's capacity there, and Seattle Children's actually is landlocked and out of room, and so they would love it if kids from the east side could stay here, or even occasionally they would transfer a patient here to make room for the kids that really need to be at Seattle Children's campus. And so we're very excited about that partnership, and we think it's going to be really good for our community as they bring in specialists, neurologists, cardiologists, general surgeons, first virtually for consults, and then they will also be, you know, expanding some of the specialties after that. So very excited about that. And so I'll be happy to take questions in a minute, and I'm sure there might be some interest in that. So evergreenhealth.com has been updated with some of the things that we're doing in the future. And so please be sure and check it out if you'd like to see what's going on. And we've got, you know, for the first time, we're going to be going out and looking at some options around our levy. And so, again, not a topic for today, but something that we want people to be aware of. So happy to take questions.
Well, thank you so much. It was very informative. Would you mind dropping the slide deck so that our listening public can see more of you?
We'll take care of that.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Councilmember Field.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. You guys do really good work. I've been to your place once in an emergency, and they were super nice.
Thank you.
And I survived.
Did you go to the one in Redmond or the one in Kirkland?
The one in Redmond.
All right.
So with, as you pointed out, the costs, I'm sorry, the challenge of revenue, new federal administration with a different attitude. One of the things I'm hearing about, and I've actually talked with people, is this emerging community health clinics. And different communities are sort of taking this health care into their own hands. A big part of their problem is capital, you know, financing, getting started. Is there, without taking them over, is there a potential for someone like you to partner with them? I think there's advantages for everyone, and how, you know, helping them get started with resources.
Yeah, we very much believe that we don't need to do everything ourselves, as long as the community's taken care of. If there's a way that we can partner, very open to that. Capital has been a challenge for us as well in terms of access, and, you know, that's where the levy can come in handy, and it's an advantage that we have as an opportunity we have as a public hospital that other hospitals don't have. And so that, you know, depending on how things go August 5, there could even be more of an opportunity to partner with organizations like that.
Well, one thing in particular, which is quick follow-up, Mayor, thank you. What, you know, your older equipment might be brand-new equipment to them.
Yes.
So.
So donations of, hand me down. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
If you want to put us in touch with, if you have contacts, we'd be happy to talk to them.
I do, and I will. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Always appreciate the annual update, and I had a neighbor who just moved to Seattle so that her kiddo could get care at Children's. So I'm so happy to hear that in the future, my neighbor won't have to uproot her whole family so that they can get the care that they need. Thank you for coming and continuing to commit to East King County. My question, you addressed some of the funding issues. We kind of know the state of the world on that. Could you just very quickly let us know if there have been any changes to your ability to provide comprehensive reproductive care or gender-affirming care in your system?
Nothing has changed for us, so no changes there. Yep. We were, yeah. So we're still providing the same level of care that we provided before.
Great, thank you. Council President.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for the really important work that you do, and really appreciate having your team here with you and commissioners. One question that I had for you, you mentioned about partnering with cities on community health. Have you already been developing some partnerships with some of our neighboring cities? I would love to hear any examples of those.
We haven't, but we are developing a new three-year strategic plan that's coming out in 2026, and we have in there that we are going to take on some community health initiatives, whether it's diabetes prevention, you know, with A1C control, improving exercise, hypertension, those sorts of things. So we are, right now, we have four things on the table, and we want to figure out what we can actually measure and help the community, even if they're not our patients. And so we're going to do one of those four, and we're going to be wanting to partner with everybody we can to roll that out.
Great, well, thank you so much, and yeah, look forward to finding some opportunities there. And I'll also just say thank you for the update about the potential impacts of cuts to SNAP and Medicaid. I think our council's been discussing this a lot about just wanting to be aware of potential impacts to residents in our community as these changes roll out. And so if you can just keep us posted on any impacts that we might want to be aware of as well, for us to look at what we could do from the city level, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation and the questions my colleagues asked. I was just interested in the workforce recruitment and retention and any information that you had there.
You know, last year, I probably talked a lot about travelers and having nurses come in, and we do still have some travelers, but it's gone down significantly for nurses. It's gone up in other areas, technicians, x-ray, CT techs, mammotechs, ultrasound techs. But it's gone down in nursing, and overall, it's down, and the rates are coming down a little bit. There's less demand, and so the rates for travelers that we're paying for the travelers are actually coming down a little bit. So thanks for asking about that. That's one area that we have seen some definite improvement.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much. The group talked about partnership opportunities. So my question is, what would you like to hear from the city regarding partnerships?
Yeah, so are there any initiatives around exercise, active, new trails, different things like that, that we could help promote for our patients or through our outreach that we have, that we could direct people to those areas as a way to get healthier? So that's an example of something. If you have any new outdoor activities that are starting, I know ax throwing is fun, but it's not a lot of, probably not a lot of aerobic exercise. But there's, I know, I live in Redmond, and we enjoy the parks and getting out, and so just, however, if there's a way that we could promote something and maybe sync up on an initiative like a month of walking, or who can walk 10,000 steps, you know, a day for three months or something in the summer, you know, something like that, where we can have some fun and have a contest or something.
Yeah, thanks for that question, and we have our Deputy Director of Parks in the audience, so I have a feeling he might have heard all of that, too. We'll get back to you on that. I think that's a wonderful idea. We have some parks and trails to share.
Yes.
Yes.
Some good ones.
Great. Any other questions for this evening? Well, thank you again so much for coming and presenting. It's great that we get an annual update, and I know our listening public likes to see it as well, to know what you're up to and what's ahead. So thank you so much, and look forward to seeing you again next year.
All right. I might hang out for a while.
Oh, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I'm going to go down to the other microphone, and I'm going to invite the Arts and Culture Commission to come up and join me. Right here is great. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives and the National Recreation and Park Association have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Redmond's parks, trails, and recreation spaces are essential to the ecological, economic, and social well-being of our community, enhancing quality of life for all residents and offering accessible places for individuals of all ages and abilities to connect with nature and safely recreate. And whereas our expanded volunteer opportunities and ongoing efforts with the Green Redmond Program support the preservation and stewardship of our urban forests and natural spaces, and whereas the city of Redmond is committed to a healthy, sustainable future, including implementing our climate resiliency and sustainability and vegetation management plan to protect and manage our natural environment for generations to come. And whereas the recent opening of Anderson Park Community Gardens provides a new vibrant space for connection, reflection, and celebration, serving community members with a welcoming, inclusive environment in the heart of Redmond. And whereas the city of Redmond Parks and Recreation Department continues to provide inclusive and dynamic opportunities from sports leagues and day camps to teen programming and senior activities, which meet the social, emotional, and recreational needs of our diverse community. And whereas events and traditions such as Redmond Lights and Derby Days foster belonging, civic engagement, and community pride, while also welcoming visitors to experience Redmond's rich culture. And whereas the city of Redmond is committed to creating a dynamic city of cultural, creative, and economic vibrancy through art education, cultural and artistic performances, temporary and permanent public art, local artist training and events. And whereas we honor and celebrate those who exemplify the values of parks and recreation and contribute to the growth and vitality of our community. Now therefore, I, Angela Bernie, Mayor of the City of Redmond, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month, and encourage all community members to participate in recreational activities and enjoy Redmond's beautiful parks, trails, and public art this summer. And with me, I have almost our entire Arts and Culture Commission, and I'd love to get a picture, and if there's anyone who would like to say a few words, Kathy, that would be great. Let's get a picture, and then I'll leave you to say a few words. And get everyone, come this way, so.
No hiding in the back.
Yeah, you can't hide in the back.
You get up front.
Come on, come on.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Kathy O'Keefe is going to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. We are proud to serve the city of Redmond on the Arts and Culture Commission, and we honor, let's see, excuse me. Proud to serve the city of Redmond on the Arts and Culture Commission and honored to receive this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all our Arts and Culture Commissioners and Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commissioners for doing such a great job serving our community. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are 10 people signed up to speak tonight in person, and one person has signed up to speak remotely, and items from, and that will close out items from the audience. So first, now we'll call up the first four names, so you know when you're coming up next. We'll start with Alex Zimmerman, then Sasha Glenn, then Chester Anderson, then Onyx Griffiths.
Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi antisemit fascist pig. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I will speak about same as I speak before. Your mayor is a criminal. She cannot give trespass because it's violation of separation. Trespass, what is I have in half 60,000 day of trespass come from council. It cannot come from mayor. It's not legal. You're supposed to be arrested here. I don't know why you don't do this. It's okay. I love you all of it, for you. And right now, I want to speak about something what is very unique. Five day ago, they cut my statement for election, for 25. You understand about?
Point of order.
Yes. Council President.
The speaker is violating the rules to not speak about elections.
Mr. Zimmerman, you have violated the rules of, you have. Mr. Zimmerman, you had violated the rules by talking about an election. I'm going to ask my attorney, he has been suspended once before. What is this next tier of suspension for him?
The next tier is up to 180 days if there's a violation within 60 days of the prior termination of exclusion period under the council rules of procedure.
And he is within 60 days of the prior exclusion?
He is.
So council can make a motion to exclude Mr. Zimmerman up to 180 days? Is there a motion to exclude Mr. Zimmerman for up to 180 days? Councilmember Stewart?
I move to exclude Mr. Zimmerman for 180 days per the council rules of procedure.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Anderson?
I'd like to amend the motion to.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I would like to amend the motion.
Mr. Zimmerman, I need you to be quiet.
For suspension of 30 days.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, try that again.
I'd like to amend the motion to 30 days.
Amend the motion to 30 days. Amend the motion to 30 days. Is there a second to amend to 30 days? There is no second, the amendment dies. This will be a roll call vote, starting with council, oh, council member, yes?
Discussion?
We were just having discussion, so Mr. Fields, councilmember Fields.
I would like for the city attorney to clarify the violation. We heard an argument that it wasn't about an election, it was about him being a victim of a crime. So if you could help me make that distinction, it would be helpful.
Well, I'll let you all have that discussion. The law is that you cannot use city resources to support or oppose a candidate or a proposition. My understanding is that he is a candidate, that he has filed, and I think that's what he was saying. I'll let you all have the discussion based on that.
Thank you.
So the answer to my question is, we make the distinction, did he violate the rule, not you, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the rule is, you can't use this time and these resources to promote an election or promote a...
Support or oppose a candidate or a proposition.
Okay, thank you. This is a difficult one for me because I get it that he was referring to an election, but he was also referring to an action that he believes happened. So because I'm not convinced, it might have been a backwards way to support an election, but it might not have been. And I don't know that we got a chance to understand. So I'll be voting no, although I'm happy to have you all vote yes.
Is there any more discussion? I'm going to go to Council President Critzer first, she hasn't spoken yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in to note that he is an active candidate for an election currently this year that's coming up in August. And he was talking about his filing related to the election. So was, and also, he, part of the reason why this motion was made is that he has come repeatedly and talked about elections, and talked specifically about his own elections, as well as others' elections, and his opinions on those, and promoting those candidates, as well as himself when he has been a candidate. And then has come back after various periods, and then repeatedly violated the rules.
Councilmember, is there, Councilmember Anderson?
This is a clarifying question. In this case, it sounded like he was stating fact that he had filed and that he was a candidate. Is that not permitted?
According to your rules, that is not permitted, according to state law.
Why?
So it's a little bit hard for me because I don't actually, I didn't understand what he was saying. So I don't think I know one way or the other. I can tell you what your rules state and what the state law says, is that you can't use these resources to support or oppose a candidate or a proposition. And he is a candidate. And so stating that he did file is one thing. Stating something in support or opposition to himself or any other candidate, I think is separate.
I agree with that, but that's not what I heard. I heard that we're going to be giving him a violation for 180 days for stating the fact that he filed for election. And there's three people up here who have filed for election as well. So I'm looking for clarity on this item, on how the council, I mean, council will vote as it votes, but...
Yeah, I mean, your council rules of procedure, right? And so that's the discussion for council to have, is whether they, you all feel that the speaker violated your rules and the parameters of your rules and state law are as I said.
Right. And we're getting into a dangerous interpretation of statement of facts being not allowed in the council chambers. So that's my statement on that.
Councilmember Fields has spoken twice. Does anyone else like to speak on this item before I call on him again? Councilmember Stewart?
I'll just add to the conversation that our council rules of procedure, when they were updated, also dictate that items should be addressed to city business, and the city does not oversee elections of this nature. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
So I appreciate the conversation that Councilmember Anderson brought up. I agree with our council rules. I think that they're important, and I think it's important to protect this time and these resources to exclude advocating or supporting or not supporting an election. I'm firmly in agreement with the council. I will just repeat, and in light of the conversation between a city attorney and Councilmember Anderson, I don't, I did not get the opportunity to hear a violation happen. It was potentially going to happen, but I didn't hear it happen. So because of that, I'm compelled to vote no.
Any other discussion on this item? Council President?
I'll just note, following up on Councilmember Stewart's comment about our council rules and relating to city business. Last week, the same speaker came and spoke about our rules and spoke about our enforcement. And that, in my opinion, was city business, because that was what we specifically have done in the city. In this case, I think that he did violate the rules in not adhering to city business. And in my opinion, stating himself, talking about himself as a candidate, and then sharing his points of view with the public as well, also is promoting his election.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Critzer.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 No.
And that passes five to two. Thank you all very much. I heard you.
I said a aye.
I heard you. Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President. And so we will inform Mr. Zimmerman via mail that he has been suspended from attending council meetings for 180 days, starting this evening. Thank you. Next up is Sasha Glenn, then Chester Anderson, then Onyx Griffiths, then Connor Graham. Graham?
Good evening. So in March, the Old Firehouse Teen Center was abruptly closed, less than three weeks' notice to the community, staff, and volunteers. We all know that.
Point of order?
Came here for...
I'm so sorry, your microphone's not turned on.
We came here for a study session led by Lorraine Hamilton, the Parks Department Director, on April 22nd, where a report was put up for everybody to view that claimed the building had ongoing safety structural issues. Lorraine then testified that she made a decision, a judgment call, that it was not safe, so an abrupt move was necessary. Well, I want to start off here by saying thank God for the Freedom of Information Act, because public records responses that we've received have divulged that the city and the Parks Director have lied to us continuously on this matter. There are handwritten notes by Lorraine Hamilton that were provided to us, dating back to July of 2024, discussing the movement of Old Firehouse. An undated page of those notes says, "Keep OFH live through June 2025", and then, in quotes, it says, "Trying to avoid the displacement, foresee a failure. Interesting and odd." Later, fast forward into February, when Lorraine was being quite tyrannical and terrorizing her staff and volunteers into not speaking with anybody about this topic. There's a note from February 28th, 2025, that says, "The discussions we are having are confidential." I'm just going to skip forward. "It's not to be spoken about with council." So I guess council was left in the dark. This just brings me to the point that forming a subcommittee about the topic of Old Firehouse and about the topic of a future teen dedicated center is critical. There is no reason, absolutely no justification, to delay forming that subcommittee and forming a committee from the community to engage with council in a deep dive into what's going on with the Firehouse, what should be done, use critical thinking to come up with some solution options, and if that center cannot be saved, to create a new teen center that is sufficient for the community. What we're being told is that the subcommittee is something the council is thinking about doing, but they're going to wait till the next report and the next study session. Oh my goodness, I just can't tell you how frustrating this is. So we're going to come here on July 22nd. You're going to show us a report that you just finally are getting that's going to confirm all of your concerns about a 30-year-old building that you've already known for decades and chosen not to address. Then we're all going to sit there and you're going to talk at us, and we don't get to say anything. No subcommittee will be formed, and I guess that will just be the end of this story. 30 years of history erased, and the community told to just, you know, go away. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter to any of you, it seems like at this point. So unless something starts to happen with the formation of a subcommittee, I think the credibility of everybody that's running this city is at issue, especially when we are now pointing out that Lorraine has lied continuously.
In conclusion? Next is Chester Anderson, then Onyx Griffiths, then Connor Graham, then Erin Hamilton.
One year ago, I competed in City of Redmond's Battle of the Teen Bands. I was so excited and honored to have this opportunity to show all my years of hard work, to support my peers, and have my craftsmanship, and hone my craftsmanship as an artist and performer. I was very honored to be carefully critiqued and allowed to advance to the finals at Derby Days, my biggest venue yet. It was so refreshing to finally be taken seriously as a young female presenting musician and have the unwavering support of all my friends, especially Jeff Hagan, Tori Watson, Jackson Levitt, and Gillian Low. I was thrilled to play second overall and even get to meet and take a photo with the mayor herself. I had gone from a shy, scared kid to a real artist and a valued part of my community. I jumped at the chance to ask Jeff to be a judge this next year, which he kindly helped me sign up for. I was so excited to finally give back to the place that had done so much for me. Cue this next year's Battle of the Bands, in all honesty, I had entirely forgotten about it without Jeff there to remind me. It was now a chore to go. I went to the sterile Red Oak Stage at RSCC, painfully reminiscent of an elementary school cafeteria. The attendance was abysmal. There were just scattered chairs and awkward silence. There were only two total acts compared to last year's 14, including me, both of which were only from OFH. Only the few friends from OFH there made it worthwhile. I could have performed at Derby Days this year, but Jeff wasn't there to help me sign up. Now I can't and don't even really want to because I'm too busy fighting for the Firehouse. And given the city's whole handling of it, I'm now not even motivated to try. There is a reason that we fight so hard to preserve the Firehouse's history. It's alive today. Battle of the Bands is a cherished, important cultural tradition that now feels like just going through the motions. We ask the City of Redmond to fulfill its identity and join us in protecting this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to preserve Redmond's integrity as a place that values its history, diversity, and culture. Thank you.
Next is Onyx Griffiths, then Connor Graham, then Erin Hamilton, then Bob Yoder.
I don't have to stand here and tell you that it is factually and statistically proven that kids not having safe space to engage and be social spiked depression and suicidal ideation. Unless you were born only three years ago, we were all living through the pandemic. And I know most of you on the council have children yourselves. You might have seen firsthand how isolation in the most pivotal parts of our, and your, and potentially your own child's development has affected us and continue to affect us. I don't have to stand here and tell you that you are breaking these kids. I don't have to stand here and tell you, as everyone else has told you over and over and over again, that you are taking away one of the only places in the world for kids like me, for kids like us, to have a place not to suffocate in whatever box you and the outside world try to force us into. I don't have to stand here and tell you that this may be the only place for kids with abusive homes or no homes. Kids who are being bullied, are queer, or in the LGBTQIA+ community, are disabled or neurodivergent. The list goes on and on. Or at least, I shouldn't have to stand here and tell you this because you already know. You know what you're doing with the OFH, and you blatantly don't care. Last month, during your pride decoralation, you sat there and said all the right things about how you loved and supported the queer community, and then you sat there and misgendered a woman twice, who was sharing a story about how she almost died due to transphobia, begging you to take trans women seriously when they report literal assault and death threats. How ironic you begin to care when your own biases are leaking out of you for all of us to see. You say you are listening while basically shoving your fingers in your ears and repeating yourself like broken records. No decisions have been made is a laughable statement.
Next is Connor Graham, then Erin Hamilton, then Bob Yoder, then Wolf Adriatico.
So I would like to address the council. First of all, you guys keep saying that no decision has been made.
Can you move the microphone a little closer?
You guys keep saying there's no decision that's been made. Every time, but when I look at Google, it already says it's permanently closed. So it's clear there is a decision being made. And from all of the stuff we've already heard, there has been. Getting rid of this facility creates an unsafe place for shows. Now kids are having to go all the way to downtown Seattle, to the Vera Project, which is the only, like, all-age facility, really. It is not safe around there. I have been there multiple times and been approached by random strangers while leaving there. Then we also have all of the other all-ages than you, like Lucky Liquor and Tequila, which is also not safe for teens. Or, let's say, these local punk, like, house shows or bridge shows, where there has been multiple incidents, including bikes being set on fire. That was an actual thing that happened. And also known predators that have been lurking, who constantly are found lurking there. You keep wanting, this upsets me. Also, you keep on saying it's, you want an accessible place. When I went to the Battle of the Bands at the Redmond, when I tried to enter the actual, like, room where the Battle of the Bands was happening, there was not a single button to automatically open the doors. I was in crutches at the time, and it would have been impossible to open those doors without severely hurting myself. Thank God Chester was there, or else I probably would have just gone home at that point because I did not want to risk needing total hip replacement surgery because I'm still recovering from hip surgery. I should not be here right now. This is a risk for my recovery, but I'm still here fighting for what's right. And the last time I noticed a few of you, it is clear, it just feels like you guys are not listening to us. You say you are, but you're not. Only a few people. We had a Parks member approach me at the Battle of the Bands, talking about, after I mentioned I did not feel safe, and apologized to me for that I did not feel safe there. And I, when I was looking back in the recording, none of you, I, thank you so much.
Next is Erin Hamilton, then Bob Yoder, then Wolf Adriatico, then Noah Radford.
All right, so back at it again, where I encountered more trans hate. Again, this time from an employee at Palmer's, a local bar, also known for its patrons and now an employee using homophobic and transphobic slurs towards the LGBTQ+ community. As you already know, I don't typically report things anymore because police don't do anything. However, the verbal attack was so severe enough that witnesses crossed the street to where I was to show support, apologize, and express their dismay of what happened. Seeing that there were witnesses this time around, and the fact that they walked over to me to talk to me, and that the council... to me to talk to me, and that the Council recently passed Resolution 1605, I thought this was the best, perfect opportunity to see if change actually happened. So shocking, I reported it. To give, I would like to give some credit to the officer that showed up, was surprisingly human, unlike the typical military-acting drones that have taken over the department. He told me that they take these sort of things very, emphasize, seriously. However, they were reluctant to interview the witnesses. Some left without being talked to. The two others had to approach the officer themselves to provide statements. But anyways, I would like, would you guys like to take a stab of what happens with that case? Anybody back there?
Point of order?
No? Nothing happened. Absolutely nothing happened.
Just to be consistent with our rules, the Speaker does need to address the comments to the Council. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyways, nothing happened. Shocking. I never heard from the officer, which my experience means they just filed it away. Nothing happened again. I wasn't given any contact information, so I guess I have to wait for my records request to find out what's going on. So I always like to say, was Resolution Number 1605 genuine, or just empty rhetoric to make us think that the city actually cares about our community's safety? Or did the Redmond Police Department just not get the memo? Thanks, because this is getting old.
Next is Bob Yoder, then Wolf Adriatico, then Noah Radford, then David Morton.
Thank you, Bob Yoder, 98052. I just have a few bullet points because Chris Braden said did such a great job on their presentation. One of the things that I really like about Evergreen Health is their community-supported service called Chat. Specifically, I had a personal experience with my mother in California, and she was looking for, we were looking for a facility for her long-term care, and we couldn't find it. It was very, we were desperate, and it was kind of heartbreaking. With Evergreen Health's Chat program, they have a great long-term care program that will find a place for you and kind of embrace that situation. So I say "um" a lot. One of the things that Evergreen Health has already offered lately, and it's really important to me, is healthcare outpatient services in two of their primary care clinics, and there's more to come. So treatment is important, and they're starting to do that. I just want to bullet point some, an important award that I think's very important for me anyway, and that's the safety. I wouldn't want to work or go into hospital that I couldn't feel safe in. And for Evergreen Health to win this award for safety 13 consecutive times, to me, is, means a lot, and I, means a lot, a very lot. So I don't have much else to say, except there is a really good in-home program that they have for people over the age of 18 that, if they're on Medicaid, they can have a psychiatrist, be treated by a psychiatrist for free, and in-home. So I think that's a wonderful service that they offer. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Noah Radford, then David Morton.
Hello. I'm working on an email that has a list of everything wrong with Merrimore and Senior Center and all that, because there's just not, there's just way too much to fit in three minutes. But until then, I have this song. It's about you guys, so, yeah. Raise your voice a lot you raise, and then I'm rolling in that grace. Necromancer politician to live in the world they made. Fog rolls in this hollow night, the twin suns hide from the moon. Shadows creeping corpses, re-coast mirrors assume. Strangers meet undercover, a fate of the king who crossed line and sand to keep them out now in blood. We pay the cost. It echoes on our bridges, in the curtain, go too close. Spin its face and rust on the grave, and let's get on with the show. Sweet dying melody, my voice is dead. Unshut tears torture me until my end. Living in Caucosa, and the king is laughing now. This city is a carcass, take your leave, your final bow. Thank you. Also, Battle of the Bands was sad. Since I have a little bit of time, I was there, I help the actually staffed AV tech set up shows. We were set to start at 5 o'clock. We arrived there at 2:30 to set up, but there was another event scheduled until 3:00. There was a different band using that stage, and they didn't strike until around 3:30. So we couldn't start setting up our show until 3:30. So we had an hour and a half.
Bye-bye. Next is Noah Radford, then David Morton.
Lots to think about there. Actually, great idea. Instead of having them at Merrimore, we should just have shows from the Redmond Teen Center right here, because there's lights and there's a lot of view, and, you know, then you guys would be inconvenienced, and you can know what it's like. Lots to think on here. We had the proclamation on great parks for everybody and wanting to take care of quality of life for everyone, and then we got to hear about why that isn't the case for y'all. We got some wonderful stuff from the hospital, which is good. I'd like to point out a weird little thing. You'll notice that the listing was alphabetical, but they still listed themselves as number one, which, you know, they're local. I love Kirkland, too. Kirkland is number one, not, Redmond's number one, pardon me. But that's very easy to show. You can make a statistic look however you want it to. So we're going to have a report on the 22nd, and you can, you can get whatever you want out of it. It's a 75-year-old building or so, and maybe it does need to come down, but the replacement needs to be in a location that the teens themselves think is going to be good for them, that is accessible for them, that they have told you repeatedly through song. That takes a lot of courage, by the way. And I understand there's also not a lot of people my age that can come out and do this because we are all busy people, and I think that a lot of city council stuff happens and goes through because there's just nobody to actually talk about it. There's nobody that actually has the time to oppose it. And so I do want to share that a lot of people feel the same way that I do, that these teens do, that there's a lot of people who can come through and give a little bit of, they can include their voice. This is still directed to you guys.
Hello, Redmond City leadership. It's me again, and I am here with a bunch of former teenagers who used to go to the Redmond Firehouse to see fantastic bands, and here's what they think of you closing the Redmond Firehouse.
That last word there was shame. I also want to point out, Mr. Zimmerman, I am very glad that I got to see that whole decision on how we, how we wanted to interpret that. And Council members Anderson and Fields, that took a lot of courage, because I can say to the rest of you, and specifically Major Bernie, nobody wants to hear that sort of horrible stuff spewed at them. Nobody wants to have someone, ironically or not, zghile at them. That's fucking, that's horrible, and that shouldn't happen to anybody. But you see someone who is, the system has failed them, and they have no faith. And we see some people here, and the system is failing them.
Next is David Morton, and then we have one online commenter.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor. I'm David Morton. I commend Redmond's proactive approach to achieving community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050. Here are some key strategies in that effort. Firstly, Redmond could ask local tech industry experts to help develop climate solutions. Because Redmond is a global innovation hub, tapping into this immense talent, as demonstrated by your participation in the East Side Climate Partnership, can accelerate groundbreaking solutions. You can possibly deepen these collaborations through dedicated hackathons or innovation challenges, harness the collective brilliance of local tech companies, and drive forward innovative, scalable climate solutions that benefit everyone. Secondly, establishing green building certification programs is vital. Redmond is actively updating its green building incentive program, offering land use incentives. New and existing buildings are major emission sources, so I urge the Council to strengthen these incentives, making green building practices more common, and ensuring all new and existing developments contribute to your carbon reduction goals. Thirdly, creating climate-focused business incubators for clean tech startups holds immense promise. Fostering a vibrant clean tech ecosystem will not only drive climate innovation, but also create high-quality local jobs. While regional efforts exist, exploring how to directly support or host such incubators will strengthen Redmond's green economy and attract further investment in suitable and sustainable technologies. Fourth, Redmond is updating its tree regulations. Trees are indispensable for carbon sequestration and enhancing livability. The regulations include permit requirements for tree removal and mandatory replacements. Redmond should vigorously enforce its updated ordinances and expand the urban tree canopy wherever possible, recognizing that trees are critical infrastructure that cools your city and cleans your air. Finally, implementing water conservation measures is crucial for Redmond's long-term resilience. I encourage the Council to strengthen water efficiency programs, from smart irrigation incentives to public awareness campaigns, as these measures are linked to your climate goals. By ensuring a secure water supply, Redmond can prepare for future changes in the natural environment. Redmond has set an ambitious and necessary goal for 2050. By fully embracing and expanding upon these strategies, Redmond can ensure a sustainable and carbon-neutral future for all its residents. Thank you.
One person has signed up to speak remotely, Joe Kunsler.
Hello?
Hello, you have three minutes to address the Council.
Why, thank you, Mayor Bernie. I'll take that as three minutes to bust Vanessa Kritzer Tower. I want to begin by playing the words of my president to you, and I gotta turn off theater audio feed. Okay, there we go.
I just want to state for the record that some of the phrases used by Mr. Zimmerman are not welcome in this city. We are a hate-free zone, and we believe that never again means never again.
I'm deeply grateful we have a president who backs up what she says with what she actually does. That's leadership. That's courage. That's integrity. That's what our parents and our veterans and our first responders deserve. And I will not use this platform to criticize the under-president in the wrong Washington for fear of a six-month exclusion, but I will share here that I'm also very grateful that this president and some of you have also stood up against Tim Iman, Brian Heywood, and Alex Zimmerman. Obviously, I miss President Biden, and only President Kritzer can solve my aching heart, losing faith in democracy. But I hope soon Redmond can have a new youth place with donations from fans of the Redmond City Council, and perhaps the Bernie City Hall can be that concert hall that some recommended tonight. Yes, I believe in honoring public service because too many families and friends of a loved one up on those dies and dies around this state fearful of their safety. This president that I'm honored to serve is turning the tide in renewing my faith in democracy, especially days after the terrorist attack on President Kritzer's North Vancouver, political counterpart Bullen Ma, Neder climate hero, I know. Back to city business, I want to say this about the Council talk, kind of about rules I followed last week. I urge the Council on a rules update to make clear that a year-long, that's right, one year-long exclusion from City Hall should be on the table. Ditto banning guxxing. Due to the nature of Mr. Zimmerman's comments and the backstory that led to it, I will be writing this Council a paper. You can expect that intelligence brief by July 7, likely before. It will not take me long to write that and tell that after-action report, and I hope every Council member, and the mayor, and the city attorney will read that action report because a lot led up to this. And I'm going to just say this very, very carefully because I'm an emotional person. I am deeply grateful for the Council members who voted to stand with this president, and the two who didn't, I hope you, I hope when you read that paper, you realize why this president did what she did, because there will be details about a Neder community facing a PDC complaint in the near future.
And in conclusion?
And in conclusion, I want to say thank you, President Kritzer, thank you, Mayor Bernie, and thank you to the Redmond City Council. I hope to see you at Derby Days.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Council President.
Thank you. I just want to clarify because this speaker who just spoke has repeatedly professed opinions that are not always my own, or implied that somehow I am working with that speaker on something, and I just want to state for the record that I have, while I have received his comments and occasionally respond to when there's a question, I have not directed him or engaged with him in any proactive way, and only been a part of what the Council has been doing in the public record on creating and enforcing our rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, let's just, we're going to make sure we can hear Council Vice President Forsyth. Let's do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? And consent carries, passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much. The next is item of business, our Ombuds Report. For the month of June, we will have Councilmember Stewart finish up her report, and then we have month of July is Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Been a busy couple of weeks. I will say, by and large, the biggest local issue that the Council has heard about is the ongoing noise complaints in Finn Hill, and that is the largest issue that I dealt with. A few of the other calls and emails, I received a call because a resident walked into City Hall and was given the Ombud of the Month, and I received a call and had a long conversation with a local parent who is navigating a mental health crisis in their family, and shared some feedback about just the disjointedness that they have experienced. just the disjointedness that they have experienced over a long period of time. And I'm sharing this with the council just because we have been having ongoing conversations about our alternative response and co-response, and the services that are available in our city do continue to evolve. So this was a very helpful, I was very grateful for this resident taking the time to share their experience. I also had a call on a parking enforcement question. Deidra is helping me track down a very specific detail about one of these questions, but did want to share with the council that, once again, we received the feedback that the signage regarding the zoning code and the two-hour parking limit does probably need to state that it applies to the entire day. So that is something we have heard again and again, and as that conversation comes back, hopefully, we can discuss that as a council. The council received an invitation to read to students at the YMCA Early Learning Center. Council members have responded individually with their availability on that. We received a request for greater regulations along our waterfront and to adopt significant changes around allowed uses around the Lake Samamba shoreline in order to create more shoreline for Redmond residents. We received multiple invitations to the grand opening of new restaurants and businesses and around the downtown light rail station. We received dozens of emails regarding council action in Redmond, Oregon, that folks inadvertently wrote to us about regarding council action on their fireworks ordinance. So I helped folks get redirected on that. We had some feedback regarding the need for a local option when it comes to Redmond seniors being able to purchase discounted Orca cards. I've also heard this feedback recently, and the suggestion has been, you know, wouldn't it be great if you could pick up those Orca cards rather than having to go to Seattle or go through the lengthy online process? If you could pick them up at City Hall, or you could pick them up at the community center, or even the pharmacy was suggested to me. So I raised this because we have multiple council members who serve on our transportation committees and have Metro's ear, as well as Mayor Bernie on Sound Transit. If that is something that you know more about and can share, that'd be great. Otherwise, I hope we can elevate that issue because it's come up a few times. And then separately, I responded to a couple of residents. I helped a resident file a police report following the experiencing an unsafe vehicle passing. And also, I am continuing to follow up on the email council received this morning via the clerk with a resident who's also navigating a police reporting issue. So I'm gonna wrap that one up before I officially hand it all over. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
We received two emails so far to the council email box regarding the fireworks ban as well.
Thank you. Any other ombuds? Councilmember Fields?
Yes, up three. First is a, I mentioned this in our meeting last week, that I met with a general manager for one of our local baseball organizations, and he had, what I had said at the time is he wasn't aware of ways to engage the council and engage the city other than just meeting with staff on an issue that's been ongoing for some times. During that meeting, I got a text from Director Hamilton, said that she'd be willing to meet with this person and his organization. And I facilitated an introduction between the two, and I believe that Director Hamilton is gonna follow up. This is about scheduling policy reform and field improvement priorities and expanding baseball access to grass lawn in Perrigo. The other is, again, on the Redmond Old Firehouse and Teen Center. I did receive the information on the public disclosure, and as a result, it surfaced enough questions for me to call Council President and ask her to support me in a meeting with the mayor's staff to understand some of these notes that were mentioned earlier during public testimony dating from July 24 through April. They run somewhat inconsistent with what we've heard, and I'm looking forward to getting clarification. The other issue, same issue, is on the formation of a subcommittee and a stakeholder group made up of teens in Redmond. And I agree with earlier public testimony that our credibility is greatly challenged, and I see no reason why we would not organize that subcommittee, council subcommittee today. So therefore, I move that the council establish a council subcommittee dedicated to organize a stakeholder group that will improve transparency and community engagement on the Redmond Old Firehouse.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, moved and seconded to create a council subcommittee. Councilmember made the motion. Would you like to speak more to this item?
Yes, I'd like to amend my own motion because I left something important out, that this be organized in the next two weeks before the next business meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilmember Stewart?
As always, could we get the motion in the chat so folks can read it?
Councilmember Fields, can you add the motion in the chat, please?
Not very quickly, but I can.
Thank you.
While I'm doing that, could we discuss the amendment to my motion, which is a timeframe, adding to my motion that we do it in two weeks?
So would you like to amend the original motion, or do you want to have an amendment, a vote on the amendment?
Whatever's expeditious. So I can do that and consider that the first motion?
Yeah, why don't, if it's okay with the second, or if we can just start back with the original motion and start with there with a time certain, the two weeks. Is that amenable to you?
It is, absolutely.
Okay.
The amendment.
Is there more discussion on the item? Council president.
I believe I've stated when we've talked about this, I don't have an issue with us creating a subcommittee on this. And I also, I've been very supportive of us creating a stakeholder group. I just think, as we've talked about, which I understand, it's hard to wait. It just seems like we will be able to do more when we have the information that we're gonna have on July 22nd. Although, within the next week and a half, we should get the materials for that meeting. So I'm happy to support tonight, us just establishing, passing a motion to, so that everyone knows we plan to create a subcommittee, we plan to organize a stakeholder group, if that helps to add additional faith in the fact that, at least from my perspective, I want to act on this and make sure that everything that we do is teen-centered and teen-led on this decision. Then I'm very happy to support it. I think what we might want to do is, the way that I read it, is that we're going to establish a subcommittee. I think in the next two weeks, we'll establish it. So I would suggest that if we pass this tonight, that we all think about it and we come back, since a subcommittee usually only includes three council members. And I think we'll want to think about who should be on that, how that would work, and kind of how we'd engage going forward, which I think is a good conversation for us to have before we have our following study session. So we could have that conversation at study session next week to be able to think about the parameters, as we discussed at our council retreat this year. With subcommittees, we do want to establish very particular charters, so that way we know when they start and when we might want to sunset those, as well as what the makeup of those members are. And since this is kind of, we're just passing this tonight, I like the idea of passing a motion with the intent to create this subcommittee, and then getting the details hashed out in the next two weeks.
I will just share that the city will already be forming a stakeholder group, which was what we had discussed originally with the council leadership and the council to form a stakeholder group. So I am a little concerned that it'll be duplicative of the work that we'll be having. We will not be forming a stakeholder group until that report is out, and we've had the discussion on the 22nd. So I just want to make that clear. So whether or not council forms a subcommittee, we'll still be doing that work.
Council president.
Just to follow up, I think my understanding in interpreting this motion would be that this subcommittee of the council would be three members, up to three members of the council. That would be tasked with working, hopefully, with the mayor's office on ensuring that we establish that stakeholder group and giving feedback on that as well, and potentially participating in that. But again, I think we'd have to hash out the details on that, but I could see that working well. And so would suggest that we do include at least one member of council leadership in it for that reason. But I think we can have that discussion at study session next week if we decide that we're gonna establish this subcommittee.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. And Mr. Fields, I appreciate that you've taken the initiative to drag in on this. I've got a couple of questions, just food for thought. Will we be able to meet with the teen constituents? And also, just if it's a stakeholder meeting of some kind, we should probably understand kind of what the goals might be, and specifically the timeframe, especially in light of the, we've been waiting for a while, and the number of meetings that we would need. So if we want to have X number of meetings, and then see if we can tighten up that schedule a little bit.
Councilmember Forsyth. Vice president.
Thank you. I'm in support of the motion. I just want to make sure that we aren't putting the cart before the horse and making sure that we're having that full conversation at study session next week about parameters and ensuring that we got the right voices there, and ensuring that the work coincides with the stakeholder group similarly to what we did with the senior and community center. So I would just say that I'm in support of it, but we have a lot of details that we need to flesh out before deciding the overarching goals and projects next week.
Other council members? Councilmember Fields has spoken twice, so I want to make sure anyone else has an opportunity. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the overall direction, that we will absolutely have a stakeholder group. And I agree with the council president that this council has been working on, and including through our comprehensive plan and the park plan, making sure the city learns how to center youth voice in decisions for and with youth. So I appreciate that overall direction. At our council retreat, we, and this is a bid in response to Councilmember Anderson, at our council retreat, and we all have the notes available to us, we set up some parameters about subcommittees. And last week at talk time, we ran late. It was getting very late, but this is something that I brought up. I do believe it would be helpful for us to codify in our rules how we're gonna do subcommittees. For instance, one of the things that we agreed to at our retreat was that subcommittees are most often formed in response to a hopper item at our retreat or following a study session. This would be an example of something other than that. And not to say that that can be, our notes actually allow for that, but to use the words of Council Vice President Forsyth, the cart and the horse. I want to make sure that we really know what we mean by subcommittee before we move forward on a direction that we're already going in. So I've talked about the rules a lot tonight at council, which is maybe not the most exciting thing to talk about, but how we do our work matters, process matters, and it's how we hold ourselves accountable. So I want to yes-and the situation. Thanks.
Any other comment on this item? Councilmember Stewart? Looks like no one else wants to speak, so it's your turn. No, not Stewart, sorry. Fields, sorry. Looking at one, saying the other. Councilmember Fields.
Wait, you got me mixed up with Councilmember Stewart?
It's the Steve Stewart. It's fine.
S, S, Stewart, Steve, I get it. So, three things. I did put, or four things. I put the motion in the chat, and the purpose of the motion is to start the subcommittee process now. There is no reason to wait to establish this. We have been hearing about this for months. So there's nothing that we're going to gain in that report other than information about the facility. The purpose of the subcommittee is to learn what we can from our stakeholders, from our residents, from our teens, and do it in an open and transparent and caring manner, not them talking at us during items from the audience, but actually engaging with them to learn back and forth. So we can organize that subcommittee now. With respect to the cart before the horse, I've always believed that the horse is community engagement and listening to the public and the people who elect us to represent them. So that's the horse, and that's why it's not the cart before the horse. The third thing I would say is, when it comes to systems and rules of procedure, those things are important, but they don't, they're there to serve us as human beings. We're not there as human beings to serve our systems and our rules and procedures. And this is a very, very unique situation. Our credibility is plummeted over this issue. We need to restore that. So I think we need to give ourselves a bit of a break from protocol and process and all of that, and actually deal with the problem. We need to show action and that we care.
Is there any more, is there any more comment on this item? So before the council is a motion, I'll read it out loud because...
Sorry, my hand is up.
Yeah, council member, council vice president, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that I wasn't talking about not including the community in my analogy. My analogy was making sure that we, as a body, know what we are doing in this exact moment. I'm in support of forming a subcommittee, but I'm a little unclear of the motion as to, the motion is saying we're forming a subcommittee, and to me, that means we are actually actively selecting those members. As long as we are all clear that that means that we are going to talk about it next week at study session, I am in favor.
The motion on the floor is I move that council establish a sub, council subcommittee dedicated to serve, to organize a stakeholder group to improve transparency and community engagement on the Redmond Old Firehouse within the two, within the two weeks. Any other comment on this? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 Now passes seven zero. All right. Thank you all. This was, we are actually in, I think, ombuds report, if I can go back in time correctly. Are there any other ombuds items? Council president.
Thank you. Exciting ombuds report time. So I have a couple items that I wanted to bring up to let the council know that are ombuds related, and just wanted to, since, for the timing, I'm slotting it in here. One is a very serious issue related to Derby Days, and I just wanted to get some input so that we, because Derby Days is coming up so quickly. It's gonna be next weekend, next weekend? Yeah. So just wanted to check in with the council. The council previously had indicated wanting to give out popsicles in the Derby Day Parade, Otter Pops. And just wanted to check in with council. We think it might be a little bit logistically challenging, so wanted to get a set of thumbs on whether folks would be okay with having the popsicles at our council booth, and then having some candy or something to give out at the parade, just because of the amount of kind of snipping and opening that may be required as part of giving out popsicles. We also can do so, but this is kind of a silly ombuds item, but did want to kind of pop in with this because council leadership didn't want to make the unilateral decision on the popsicle situation, in case council members have thoughts. Are council members good with us having popsicles at our booth, but then also, and then of candy at the parade? Not seeing anyone against it. So just letting everyone know that. We've been kind of talking through those logistics. Also, I'll note that at our council booth, we're excited to have Rye Pack joining us. And they're gonna, and I heard from the chair of Rye Pack that several members will be joining, and we're working with Deidra to be able to make sure that those teens can be signed up with us. So hopefully... So hopefully, folks can come and join us at our council booth, come and talk with us about the teen center, talk with us about whatever topics are on your mind, and we'll also have some of our other teen leaders with us there. So looking forward to that as well. Also, just wanted to note that the council, at our study session, we had talked about wanting to reach out to community-based organizations, just to check in with them, and council leadership has been following up on that, and Deidre should be sending out to the council the spreadsheet that we talked about tomorrow that has the list that we brainstormed of community-based organizations that work on community health, that work on supporting our immigrant community, that work on supporting other vulnerable communities and organizations within our area. And so council members, just look out for an email on that, and you can sign up if you want to go and be able to reach out, and there's some suggested questions there. So looking forward to having that and having council be able to report back during ombuds and during, hopefully, an additional session that we can have with mayor and staff to discuss how we can support our community at this time. It's something that we have received as an ombuds question from many groups and organizations on how we can support, and I think this first step of really going out and asking what they need and then how we can support is really important. And then last thing that I just wanted to note also in this area is just that council leadership has been working with the, with our legislative coordinator on an ombuds response to make sure that when people email the council, they get a fairly quick response, just letting them know that the email has been processed. And so I'll be sending out the language that we worked on because we now have the ability for our legislative coordinator to send out an email that just says, from the office of the council essentially, "we're working on your response," while the ombuds is actually prepping the information or getting the information from a director. So I will be sending that information out, and if anyone has any comments or questions on that, feel free to reach out on that. But hopefully, that'll help us to just make sure that everyone who writes to us hears back from the city right away, to know that we got their message, we read their message, while we're also looking and gathering any additional information. We'll still have the opportunity for the ombuds to write back to them and share their personal kind of message as a council member, but also just to get even more quick responsiveness to the, to the community. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? I will just share, thank you, councilmember Fields, for sharing the phone number of dance instructor. I had a good conversation with her today, so thank you. The next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Earlier tonight, we had the Planning and Public Works Committee of the whole. We advanced contracts for the Meadow Park improvements. In our CIP, this is called sport court improvements, that's the pickleball and the basketball, but there's actually like a ton of other improvements happening there, including in the sidewalk and the surrounding area. Look for that later this summer. We also advanced a contract on the buffered bike lanes on the other side of town, on Bell Red and the curb management plan. We previewed our transportation master plan chapters for our next review. Those chapters are the pedestrian chapter and the transportation demand management chapter, which we will review at the study session. Last week, I was in the Tri-Cities and attending the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and specifically, the AWC Legislative Priorities Committee, which I'm serving on for 2026. This meeting began at 6:30 a.m., so glad you had the council member who enjoys early mornings in participation. But here is where we are. You know, the setup for our next legislative session is short, tough, and low expectations. The survey of the member cities, which had much more robust participation this year and the feedback from our members, the top issue was, usually, public safety is the top issue. This was not even in the top two this year. Far and away, the finance and revenue issues were the top concern of Washington cities. And if that is going to be the case, one of the questions I invite conversation from my fellow council members on and thinking about, you know, this fall when we're creating our own agenda, the legislature was interested in adding progressive revenue tools to their own toolkit, as it were, and some of that got accomplished and some of that didn't. Are there tools that we, as a city, would like to see advanced and to see progress on? Those are some of the things that the AWC staff are really looking to hear from us on. And our next meeting is coming up in July, where we will discuss those and begin to kind of collate the draft-led agenda for the 2026 legislative session. So we'll see you in Olympia, Councilmember Salhoudin. And also, I did email the council about this one yesterday to let everyone know, the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association has our regularly scheduled meeting next week. I sent the council a draft letter that we will be discussing at that time. The concern, of course, is for our Sound Cities Association members, the tax fatigue and cost of living that our residents are experiencing, and it mirrors kind of the discussion we had at our recent Finance Committee meeting regarding different sales tax proposals and the like. So the concern that is inspiring this right now is the King County Council's consideration of a transportation benefit sales tax, in addition to the public safety sales tax that they are currently considering for King County residents, as well as the large levy for parks in August and the EMS levy in the fall. So all of that together, creating a moment of concern and uncertainty and a request, really, from the SEA member cities to come to the table and have a conversation with us. Did any, so if I may, Madam Chair, if anyone had any feedback on that letter that they'd like to share, I do have a deadline, actually, to submit comments tonight. So as we go through these committee reports, it'd be helpful to hear if anything is on your mind. I also attended the...
I think we have a comment, so if we'll pause there for a moment. So councilmember, councilmember Anderson?
Were there specifics on the transportation benefit sales tax, like them out? Do you know?
They're going for the 10th of 1%.
10, I'm sorry, I didn't...
10th of 1%.
10th of 1%, thank you.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Thanks for that pause.
Yeah. And then the last committee I attended was the National League of Cities Natural Resources Energy and Environment Committee. I have shared occasionally, especially in these last few days, some of the reports from our NLC lobbyists on things that matter to our cities regarding the latest bill and what's in it and what's not, including the action today. Thanks.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Council President.
Would it be all right if I responded to the question from councilmember Stewart in addition to my committee report?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Great. So I just wanted to follow up on the discussion around the potential letter from SEA. This was also discussed, well, I guess, as part of my report at the SEA board meeting a little less than two weeks ago, just after our last business meeting. And I think, from my perspective, this letter, I think what I would hope is that, and I've shared this with councilmember Stewart, is that potentially, we could get some eyes from our policy, our advisor. Did she have any changes or potential wording on that?
We suggested some language changes, and they did not accept them. So you would have to get more specifics from her.
Okay. Would be helpful to know. Yeah, if you, mayor, if you wouldn't mind sending me those changes, just so I can be aware as part of the discussion with the board as well. I think what we want to do, in my opinion, on this, is that I think we all are very, or at least from my perspective, I'm very supportive of us finding ways to invest in local roads and transit needs. I think the discussion that was at the SEA board meeting, and I think probably was at PIC, I know, I think councilmember Salhoudin was there, so probably can weigh in there as well, was just that kind of all of these different sales taxes added up, is there's a lot of tax fatigue at the moment, and is this the right moment? And how do we have these discussions when the county is going to bring something, but also local jurisdictions may be needing to levy for things or use other similar tools for local needs? And how do we kind of have that discussion with the county? I just think making sure that we can both emphasize our shared goals around transportation, while also wanting to set up a good process with the county overall makes sense. So hopefully, the final version of this letter can thread that needle. Oh, and I do have another update, but I will pause in case others want to weigh in on this.
Anyone else on the letter? I'll have, I'll have Amy Seis send it to both council, councilmember Stewart and you, any language changes she wanted, that was she didn't get. So just so you have that, that you know. Thank you. Oh, council vice president, thank you.
Thank you. Can, yeah, can she send that to maybe full council so we can see what the city's, the policy analyst was thinking on that letter as well? And then, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that King County taxes applied to non-city residents. Is that, am I incorrect in that?
My understanding of the TBD from the county is that it would impact all residents of King County.
Okay.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right. Council President, would you like to continue?
Yes, thank you very much. So I also, so I did attend the SEA board meeting in which we discussed this topic. I also wanted to just give council members a heads up. One of the other topics we discussed was just making sure that for all of the regional boards and committees, that we have good attendance. So the staff was talking about just making sure that we have a really clear attendance policy. So if you are serving on a board or committee, you're going to see some information come out on that attendance policy, and essentially, just make sure to attend, or if you're not going to attend, please send in in advance to let the staff know, because we need to make sure that there's enough, enough SEA representatives on these regional committees to be able to both represent SEA effectively in the votes and also to make sure that, you know, we have quorum at certain bodies. So similar to some of the issues we deal with on our own council, SEA is just trying to do this. If, and there's going to be some new rules in terms of SEA's board removing folks from committees should they miss multiple times in a row without giving any sort of reason or heads up about their attendance. So just an FYI, that you'll be seeing that if you do serve on an SEA committee, and wanted to make sure that everyone on our council knows about that, and I'm sure we all will be excited to be attending all of our different regional committees. And then the only other thing that I wanted to note is that I did attend, last week while Mayor Bernie was, was at the AWC conference, I attended the Pugetstown Regional Council Executive Board Committee and, or meeting, and we actually certified a lot of comprehensive plans, including Redmond's. So huzzah. It's been certified, now we can apply for PSRC grants, and it's going, and anyway, big news for us. We also, all of the, all the plans that were on our agenda mostly were on consent, except for, there were two plans, Lake Forest Park and Renton, that had conditional certifications based on analyses for capacity for emergency housing, as well as updating their transportation elements. So I believe councilmember Stewart may have noted this in her previous ones. We were picking up that work from the Growth Management Policy Board and Council, and so, but we did kind of the final piece of that at that meeting. So that was, that was exciting. We also had some discussions and updates from federal lobbyists for PSRC and had some good discussions on that and some of the potential impacts in our region. And so it was, it was interesting to be able to hear across the region some perspectives on navigating the current environment. That's all. Thanks.
Great, thanks. I had a couple of things I wanted to report on. I attended two conferences in a row, which was a lot. The first one was the United States Conference of Mayors, and I wanted to share a couple of things. One, I got to present about our drone as first responder program, and that was really exciting and got a lot of great feedback and connections on that. So our, we have just an extremely successful program, and I was able to share some of the success stories we've had around it, including finding an older community member that had gotten lost and was, had some issues, and the drone was available to find him before anything, any harm came to him. So that was wonderful. That was just one of the, one of the things I shared with them. Another thing that happened at the conference was that we won another climate award. So we got an honorable mention for our vegetation management program that we've implemented, and I was really excited to be able to share that and win the award for the city. And I also attended Association of Washington Cities with two of our council members, council member Fields and councilmember Stewart, and it was a really wonderful conference. I got to go back to Pacific Northwest National Lab, where I did an internship forever ago, and it's very different now, and we got to see some battery storage that they're working on, which is really exciting. They're one of the few national labs in the nation, and we're really fortunate to have them in our state. They also have a branch here in the Seattle area associated with it. But the other thing that I just wanted to share with council is that I was able to attend two sessions with Jurassic Parliament with Ann McFarland, who is retiring at the end of the year. But she reminded me of some, some great things that we have in using Robert's Rules, and one of the things that I had probably not been as good about is that people are only allowed to speak twice according to Robert's Rules, so that's why I might have been saying we need to wait till other people speak before we speak more than once. But I think it would be great if we could remember some of those rules to kind of tighten up our meetings so that we make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak as well as other things. So great conference, glad people could go. It was really exciting and look forward to the next time. So yes.
And did you get elected to anything?
I, I did actually, got elected to two things. So I am now on the Advisory Committee for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I'm also on the Association of Washington Cities Board as well, representing District 7, so I'm excited about both of those things. I was just, wanted to share city stuff first, so yes, very excited, excited that you're on the SEA Board as well, because I think we're really well-represented and help, help Redmond shine out there in the region, the state, and nationally now too, which is great.
Any other committee reports for this evening? All right, seeing none, we do not have any unfinished business, we do not have any new business. There is an executive session. The last item on the agenda is an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment, RCW 42301101G, for 25 minutes. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn. Let's give it, if I can add again today, at 9:15. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting. Thank you.